We're up. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Swanson. Stuart.
Which would you like?
Stuart.
Here.
Member Swanson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here.
We have a form of revised agenda in front of us this evening. Is there a motion to adopt a revised agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt a revised agenda. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And then, with respect to the items on the consent agenda, Member Stuart, if I remember you, serves me right, you want to pull 4L.
Correct.
Anyone else want to pull anything off the consent agenda? All right. With the exception of 4L, is there a motion to adopt the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of 4L. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. 4L, Member Stuart.
I just want to ask staff, really, as we have these proposals come in front of us with, really, any vehicles from our fleet, this happens to be a tractor, but anything that has a combustion engine, we'd very much like to have, and I want to make sure that we're working with our Energy and Environment Commission so that we have the information about whether or not there are alternatives that would have lower emissions so that we could evaluate whether or not we think that's a sensible approach. I'm not going to hold up this particular amendment, but I do want to call that out for future references, that we can hear about the environmental impact of these machines that we're buying. Thank you.
Would you care to move the matter?
I'll move the matter.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second, to approve 4L, the acquisition of a 2015 John Deere tractor, excuse me.
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Sure can.
If you notice, though, that we do have scores, and part of it is on the amount of time that you can go before replacement, which is also a better environmental thing of not replacing cheap stuff, so I view this as already stating that it has a value because of its longevity, so.
Good. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All right. All those in favor of adopting 4L, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. That concludes our work in the consent portion of the agenda. We're now going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. This evening, we have three proclamations, and then Jordan Gilgenbach has some information for us as well. First proclamation is the Arbor Day proclamation, and that is designated as April 24th, 2015. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed at the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska; and whereas 2015 is the 143rd anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees are a most valuable resource, purifying our air, helping conserve our soil and energy, serving as a recreational setting, providing a habitat for wildlife of all kinds, and enriching our lives in other important ways; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas disease, insects, and pollution have damaged and continue to threaten our trees, creating a need for tree care and tree planting programs, and fostering greater public concern for the future of our urban forest; and whereas Edina is proud of the beautiful shade trees which grace our homes and our public places, now therefore I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2015, be Arbor Day in Edina, and call upon the spirited and foresighted citizens of Edina to plant trees now for our pleasure and that of future generations. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the Arbor Day proclamation, declaring April 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. I'll pass this on to the clerk, and we'll give that to the arborist or other appropriate person from our staff. Next proclamation involves Municipal Clerks Week, which is May 4th through the 10th, 2015. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk in the city of Edina and elsewhere. Now therefore, the Edina City Council does recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2015, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extends appreciation to our municipal clerk, Deb Mangan, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to designate May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Municipal Clerks Week. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Clerk Mangan, here is your proclamation to place in the appropriate location in the administration. Thank you, Member Swanson. And then, the last proclamation for the evening, before we bring up Jordan Gilgenbach, is a proclamation for Public Safety Month, May 2015. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the city of Edina is continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound; and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings; and whereas these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play; and whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, windland fires, and earthquakes; and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings; and whereas building safety, maximizing resilience, minimizing risks, the theme for Building Safety Month 2015 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2015 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies; and whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, it encourages Edina citizens to join with other communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities across the nation. Is there a motion to adopt the Building Safety Month, May 2015 proclamation?
Could you just reread that?
So moved. So moved. Second. I don't think you should be allowed to second after that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And do we have anyone that's going to accept us on behalf of the Building Safety officials? Yes, we do. And maybe you have a few comments as well. Introduce yourself at the podium, would you please? And...
You're not going to get out of here without doing that.
All right. My name is David Fisher. I'm your chief building official here at the city of Edina. I came to say a couple of things, but as it says, it's to kind of make people aware of tornado safety, educate people for, you know, planning at your house if you have a fire or something like, so you have a place to go after a fire or something like that. Get to know who your neighbors are, so you look around the neighborhood for public safety as well, so if you see something going on that shouldn't be going on. Maybe have an emergency kit in the house, things like that. But kind of get the word out, to talk about that. And then, for the city of Edina, for public construction stuff that's going on, just to be safe when you're building and when you're building stuff in general. And I think we're going to have a great year this year, too, for building construction, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Questions for David? Thank you, David. And next, we have Jordan Gilgenbach, that's going to present the Speak Up Edina Report. The topic of this meeting is on streetlights.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Lieutenant Mayor, Mr. George Gilgenbach, and the Asian Tornator here at the city of Edina, and I am here to present on the March discussion for Speak Up Edina. Speak Up Edina, we've had the site since 2012, we've been hosting for the last year and a half. Monthly discussions of varying topics, just to gather community feedback. In March, we talked about level of street lighting as the topic. We asked questions, these questions, such as, what do you think of the current level of street lighting? Where is more needed, or where is less needed, and what kind of street lighting that residents seem to prefer? The discussion was open for a little more than a month. We got 22 comments on it, just over 1,000 visits, and about 50, little over 5,700 page views. About 31 and 1/2 percent of our visitors came to the site more than once, and the majority of respondents were from Edina, or at least their IP address was registered as in Edina. One of them, it looks like it was in St. Paul. All of these comments, again, are all available in your packet. This is just a quick summary. It seems that people are generally satisfied with what the lighting brings to the city in terms of safety, both in crime safety and in personal safety, when you're out and about walking or driving. There were some areas of the city that they think that there's not enough light, and some where they think that there might be too much. One specific intersection was, near Edinburgh Park, was mentioned as having six, I believe, streetlights on it. Though, a few people did mention that possibly a detailed lighting study should be done or could be conducted to make a more informed decision on where more lighting or less lighting could be used. But everybody sort of, all mentioned that safety is really a priority when you're talking about lighting. A few comments that were brought up, make sure that lights are downward facing so that there's less light pollution, and that it has maximum effect on streets and sidewalks. And the majority of the comments seemed that people are wanting the city, or most of the streetlights, to be converted to LED lights, much like what have been installed in the new intersections at France Avenue at 66, 70, and 76. People think that that lighting is more efficient, it's brighter, and it's overall a better quality light. And in the neighborhoods, it seems that they'd like to see more ornamental lighting. Though this is brought up in street reconstructions for each neighborhood, it seems that residents think that that would look better than what is currently offered if they don't go down that route. One comment was brought up that was an interesting one, that if the technology exists, it'd be nice to see or need to see something where the lights fade or dim when there's no traffic or pedestrians around, to help save on the electricity costs and the light pollution. With that, for this discussion, if anybody has any questions on that, I will be glad to take those.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Just, you know, reflecting on the balance between the light that makes us feel welcome and safe in the evening and at night, and being able to enjoy the stars and the northern lights. Northern lights occurred about a month ago, and I'm sure we saw none of them, even if they could have been visible here, in the northern Twin Cities even. I'm sure we didn't see any of them, and they were vivid. And so, I would encourage us to be as mindful as we can about a balance. Looking at the lighting in the area around Edinburgh Park, that's a tough one. Because you've got Edinburgh Park on the west side of York, and you have commercial between 76th and 77th there on the east side, and then you have residential facing 494 on the frontage road. So I'm sure it's light all night, because they're at 494, and they're at a busy commercial district. So if we can be mindful to maybe some sort of light, at least closest to the homes, that could fade, I have no idea if that's possible.
Yeah, that's a good question.
But I know that I see them go on and off, so I know that it's capable of, they have the capability of going on and off. But lighting is one of these issues that we have a variety of requirements for, and I don't think, you know, it's one of those things that I think does require some balance.
It seems that the people that live in the eastern, or the western part, rather, of the city, where the roads curve more and there are fewer sidewalks, those are the people who are looking for maybe more light as they're walking on their streets. And, I mean, we've got the sidewalk plan that's going to be implemented over the next couple decades, but as that's ramping up, people would like to see that higher visibility and higher safety, it seems, on that half of the city, whereas in the Southdale area, we're talking maybe there's too much, or maybe, in certain areas, there might be too much. And that might be something from the comments that we need to continue to look at as we see more and more density go into that area.
All right. Other comments, questions, from Jordan? Thank you, Jordan. That was interesting.
This one's discussion is on the city taglines. We don't currently have an official city tagline, so we're looking to see what residents think about that, if we need one, and what they think it might be, what they think it could be. And that'll be open through the first part of May here.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move beyond the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two matters in the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, both involve continuing public hearings, one to May 6th, one to June 2nd. The first one would require a motion to continue a public hearing to May 6th on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding lot division procedures, rezoning procedures, sideyard setback regulations, and our two regulations. Is there a motion by anyone on the council to continue this matter to May 6, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion, a second, to continue the matter designated to May 6, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next matter that requires the consideration of a continuance to June 2, 2015, is a preliminary plat for the Blake Woods. Specific property addresses are 5321 and 5331 Evanswood Lane, and 5320 and 5324 Blake Road. I'm assuming that the applicant has requested this extension. Director Teague?
That's correct, Mayor. They have requested an extension, and it's actually to June 16th is the deadline for a decision, so the council would have two cracks at it.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue that matter to June 2, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to continue the preliminary plat hearing regarding the properties I mentioned earlier to June 2, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next, we're moving into the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address a matter with the council that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? I noticed we've got a few students in the back tonight. Where are you from?
I'm in Southview.
Southview? Okay. Good. Well, welcome. And seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, where the first matter in front of us this evening is a project update by Director Milner regarding the possibility of a roundabout at Tracy Avenue, Valley View Road, and Valley Lane, where they intersect.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Like the mayor mentioned, we'll talk about the intersection modification at Tracy Avenue, Valley Lane, and Valley View Road. The project is located just south of Highway 62, near the high school, between 62 and the high school. We did have a neighborhood meeting on March 23rd, where invited the old neighborhood north of 68th Street, south of 62, west of the railroad tracks, and east of the high school property. We also put a couple variable message signs out on the roadway on Tracy Avenue to invite people to come down to the public works area and discuss this project. We had over 60 people attend that meeting and got a lot of valuable input. This project's already also listed as CIP project number 15-151 for the intersection, and 15-165 for the Box Culvert on Valley Lane. Also, please recall, this is the intersection where the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail will be going through, and there was much discussion with the council about pedestrian movements at this location. This shows the final alignment that was approved by the council going through that intersection at Tracy, Valley View Road, and Valley Lane. So there's concerns about trail users crossing with the traffic up and down Tracy Avenue. The traffic data we have, the 85th percentile speeds in 2014 are 36.7 miles per hour. It is a 30 mile an hour limit. There's been eight crashes in the last 10 years. We have had some concerns from residents about traffic queuing on Valley Lane. They can't get out on the Tracy or Valley View because of the amount of traffic, and Monday through Friday, the average daily traffic is over 9,000 vehicles per day. And we've also received several traffic safety requests, that's in the appendix of the report regarding pedestrian safety and trying to cross that, at that intersection or near to that intersection. Some more of the existing conditions, there are existing bike lanes on Tracy Avenue, as you can see in the photo. There's a sidewalk on the east side of Tracy up to Valley Lane, and then it continues on the south side of Valley Lane, heading east. There are also some other utility concerns with the remaining life, service life of the water main. There's some drainage issues. We got a lot of comments from residents about some drainage issues, and then that Box Culvert Bridge I mentioned on Valley Lane. We did consider many other treatments here before we came to the concept of the roundabout. We looked at a singleized intersection. It didn't meet warrants because of the high traffic volumes going north-south compared to the east movements. We looked at rapid flashing beacons with refuge islands, and we're still looking at those two in conjunction with the roundabout. We discussed an overpass. There was cost concerns, and it wouldn't address any of the traffic issues. Underpass, it's in the floodplain, there's just not available space for an underpass. We could change speed limit or enforcement, but that's an operations side for PD, and we think we could do a better job of addressing some of these concerns without that. And then, stop signs. With stop signs, you're just moving that traffic situation either all the way up to 62 or down further by the high school, if you're going to stop traffic in that location, so. So this is the concept that's in the preliminary engineering report. It is a single-lane roundabout. This addresses many of those concerns we talked about, the pedestrian crossing, it gives those refuge islands for the halfway point across those legs of the roundabout. It addresses speed, the speed limit through these are 15 mile an hour, and it addresses the queuing issue on Valley Lane, so people have the opportunity to get onto Tracy or Valley View Road easier. We could also address those utility concerns as we're reconstructing this. Our plan is for reconstruction in 2016. And then, we heard a lot of comments from the residents at that meeting about the roundabout at 66th and Portland, that they really liked the experience there, so we're going to meet with the Ridgefield staff and talk about what their experience with that roundabout at 66th and Portland. There are some minimum design standards Midot has for roundabouts. The minimum refuge island is 10 feet, so that it can accommodate multiple bikes, multiple users, even a bike with a trailer. Some of these on the graphic are shown, the south ones, 15 feet wide. The signage that's shown on here is just the standard at this time, but like I said, we're going to continue to look at whether we need the flashing beacons to signify when pedestrians are crossing because of the vertical grade coming down from 62. So all those things are still in the final design considerations as we move forward, but we know the concept will fit from a right-of-way and from a grading standpoint. Funding, we're going to use some of our municipal state aid funds, these are all municipal state aid routes, some utility funds, the PACS fund will cover some of the crossings. Three Rivers Park District, as part of the trailway agreement, has had, that they'll cover up to $420,000 for this area for basically the safety trail crossing improvements. No special assessments will be used to fund this project. Timeline, January, February, we met with the fire department, the police department, the public works, and school district, and got input from all those groups, which you can find in the report. In March, we had that resident meeting, but also went to the ETC for comments. We're here tonight at the city council, and if it goes well tonight, we'll come back with a professional services, something for you to consider authorizing to go forward. Review design with residents, we think there might be some impacts with driveways and maybe some landscaping in the area. Go back to the ETC this fall, solicit bids in the winter, and construction would be tentatively scheduled for the summer of 2016, between when school lets out and when it starts up again in '16. Here's a photo looking on Valley Lane to the west, facing Tracy Avenue. This would be the location where the trailer go down the west side and cross over on your left-hand side of this photo with the roundabout. So with that, I can stand for any questions you may have at this point in the process for this project.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Okay. So we know that people go fast here. Okay? Generally, fast, too fast for the intersection, too fast for the area. Overall, I'm going to read my notes, because I had a couple of conversations today. So overall, this roundabout will help get traffic through this intersection more safely. I don't think there's any argument there. It'll help the people from Valley Lane to get onto Tracy easier, just because the flow will just incorporate that, as we know, from roundabouts. The route for trail users, and if you can, I don't know if the mouse is available to you or not. Oh, yeah, it is. Okay. So can you please describe what you see as the optimal route for trail users through here?
Yep. Our discussion's with Three Rivers Park District, is that they would sign it for the regional trail to go down the west side and make one crossing of the roadway, down on the southern island down here, and then that trail continues up and continues to the east. So one crossing, it would be signed as, this would be the regional trail. If users choose to go this way, you would not be following the regional trail at that point.
Okay. So they would consider their trail having that single crossing down on the southern end, then?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to suggest that it also be signed that people walk their bikes across, because they would become pedestrians at that point, and the traffic would be required to stop for them going through. So trail users who are on bicycles would walk their bikes across the street in order for traffic to stop. Now, if they proceed on their bicycle, assuming there's no other pedestrian, no pedestrian in the area, is traffic required to stop for a bicycle?
It's required to stop for pedestrians. I think what we're still considering is the rapid flashing beacons here, so I would imagine a cyclist would come down, imagine during high school times when there's a lot of traffic. a lot of traffic, they're going to have to stop. They're going to push the button, wait for cars, get into the, once they're in the crosswalk, vehicles have to stop and yield.
Right, right. Understood.
Whether they ride across or not, that's a good question.
Okay.
We should do some more research on that.
I would just, I'm thinking of the Dakota Rail Trail. There is one crossing in downtown Navarre, and we've been there on a Wednesday afternoon. We've been there on a Saturday. We've been there on a Sunday. It's a horrible crossing. The traffic control is a half a block away. This is a mid-block crossing in downtown Navarre, and it really is a difficult crossing to get through. There's a lot of traffic. And so as a bicyclist, particularly somebody who's got little ones, and they are not going to be fast getting through there. And it's a dangerous place to stop. So I'm kind of looking at this going, you know what? I don't want this to be dangerous. So I'd really like to set it up. Because it's on a pretty busy street, especially during certain times of day, I want to set it up so that we can, so that it can be as safe as it can be. I think most of the trail users, in my opinion, are going to be recreational. The commuter bicyclists are not necessarily going to be on the trail, but the recreational bicyclists, the recreational trail users are certainly going to include families who are not going to be quick across the street. Okay, through those.
I think one comment, if I may, while you're looking at your notes is, both these crossings on the south side, you have to almost turn 90 degrees, so you're not going to get those bikes that just go zooming right through. It's not a straight shot. When I think of some of the regional trail just north of here in Hopkins, so it's more of a deliberate movement to slow those users down a bit.
Understood. Yep. Okay, so let's see here. Last page you're going to read. Oh! And you said flashing lights, so that's fine. The last page of the report, where is it here? Valley View Road versus Valley Lane vehicles per hour. And then in the chart, you have a column for time, then you have a vehicles per hour major column and a vehicles per hour minor column. What's major and minor?
Major is Tracy, Valley View Road. The minor road is Valley Lane.
Well, this is arterials.
No, it's just this intersection. You look at the main road, and the offshoot road is Valley Lane.
Okay. So major is Tracy.
So it's just counting. Yep. So those are 300 through 900 on Tracy.
And then minor is Valley Lane.
Coming off Valley Lane. So at the peak, we have just over 100 coming on from Valley Lane.
All right. I did speak with Paul Nelson of the Transportation Commission today, and he said their main concern is the trail users. I don't think there's a big concern about the roundabout itself. It'll be a huge improvement. But the concern is the trail users and whether they will follow this. The alternative, as I see it, if they choose to not go all the way to that southern end, is that they'll cross, then they'll cross. So they'll kind of go across the northern part of it, and they'll end up having to cross the road twice.
They will. Yep. They'll have to. So you think about, if we didn't, if we just did flashing and crosswalks, they'd be dealing with traffic going almost 37 miles an hour. So that's, this is really going to slow the traffic to make it safer for pedestrians.
Okay. All right. So now, please describe to me what we're seeing here. Because we see the trail coming, and we see this white, what I'm assuming is what we would call a bike lane. And then there's something blue. What's the blue?
That, because we have bike lanes on Tracy and Valley View today. Remember the photo with the lanes? So this is where, let's say you have a trail user that's trying to get to the public works facility, and they're coming from the northwest. They could ride the regional trail, and that little blue line is where the bikes can get on and get right into the bike, the five-foot bike lanes. So it's like an on-ramp for bikes, off the regional trail, onto the roadway bike lane network. Same thing if you're going northbound on Valley View Road, you can go off the roadway because the bike lanes end. They dash when you get into a roundabout. If you drive 70th Street, they end. So if you're coming northbound on Valley View Road, you can bop off on kind of a exit ramp for bikes to get onto the regional trail and continue on either to the east. If you're heading north, you should ride it like you're a vehicle. Get in the roundabout, take your space, and get through. It's 15 miles an hour. If you're comfortable riding on the road, that's what you should do if you're going to go from south to north, right through the roundabout, and continue north on Tracy Avenue.
All right. So you're going to look at, you're going to look at some comparisons with the roundabout on 66th and Portland?
Correct. Yeah, the neighbors had really good experiences over there, and they said we should take a look at that one. So we're going to meet with the Richfield staff on that one.
Do you know if there are bike lanes through that roundabout?
MINDOT doesn't allow bike lanes through roundabouts. So none of the ones in the state have it. We've asked about doing some different, some of the ETC comments was, can we do green lanes through roundabouts? Unless there's a major safety issue they want to address, they want to be consistent with all their facilities in the state. So they were open to discuss it with us, but they want to make sure they're addressing a major safety concern before they do some different, unique one. They want to be consistent from a user perspective with all the ones throughout the state.
I guess my final thing is, this is a major route for the high school, and the high school students are not the only people who ride this, speeding or not. And so I totally understand that. At the same time, I've raised a young one who, when he was a senior, felt like this was an entitlement. He was just entitled. And not saying that derogatorily at all. It's where they are in their lives. But that really, driving is a right. You are not entitled to be able to drive. It's a right. And so I guess I'd love to see a little more enforcement, if possible, along here, even just the sign that says, "You are going this fast," to remind everybody that this is, you know, there are bike lanes along here. And you do have children getting to school along here. And with or without a roundabout, the speed limit does need to be enforced.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
I like this plan a lot. I'm way more comfortable with this than an intersection across. My only caution on having done the roundabout on Richfield on...
Portland?
Portland. It's the one going over to the Richfield City Hall, is it's a double lane roundabout.
Right.
And that tends to be a little bit more confusing than a single lane roundabout. And it's much wider, too, because it's a double lane roundabout. I would rather use the width here that we might have to make wider boulevards for walkers and bikers than worry about having two lanes in the roundabout.
Yeah, we don't need two lanes here. This is going to be a one-lane roundabout. It was more about the experience of pedestrians crossing there.
Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay.
They shifted the location of the crosswalks back a little bit further from the, kind of, the standard, and pedestrians are more visible to the cars. So not the two-lanes, four-lanes thing. This would be a single lane roundabout.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. I think this is a great plan.
Thank you. Member Stewart?
I just have one item I want to talk about. We have created boards and commissions to effectively be deputized for the city council to focus on certain issues. Members of the Adina Transportation Commission, I think, had a chance to meet with you not very long ago. The next thing on the schedule for them is, I think, in the fall. I would encourage you to actually continue to have iterative meetings with the Adina Transportation Commission so that, I think they would be very frustrated if the next thing they got to see was a bunch of designs that they were asked to approve.
Sure.
And they would like to have more input in some of the process here before the concrete gets set, as it were, in the process and the plan. So please, on our behalf, do meet with the Adina Transportation Commission and continue to get some feedback. I know that may slow you down a bit, but I think it's worth the effort.
Senator Neal?
The ETC was involved in this process and did review it prior to it coming to council tonight.
And I guess I would encourage you to give your feedback tonight, because you just gave feedback encouraging more input from transportation, but you gave no feedback that I heard on how you feel about it, and I would like to hear how you feel about it.
So I kind of like the roundabout plan, but I also like using the expert advisors that we have asked to serve us to provide their input and...
I was in question that. I just wanted to know how you felt about it.
Assuming that we move forward on this thing, no, strike that. Kind of inherent in this whole presentation is the notion that Three Rivers Park District had an integral role in designing this, and it satisfies all of their requirements.
Correct.
Is that a fair assumption?
Correct, and they'll continue to be involved in it because they have requirements because of the federal funding they're using.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Yep.
Because it didn't seem to me like they were really addressed that much in here, but it's the trail, the Nine Mile Creek Trail that they're building that we're trying to help accommodate, and I want to make sure that we were on the mark with them as well.
It is. I should have put a paragraph in there, input from the Park District. We've been in talks with Eric Nelson and the Parks over there the whole time. They feel this is a better, safer crossing than just having a roadway with a crosswalk and some flashers on it. So we'll keep them, definitely they have to be involved because some of their approvals at the federal level have to meet requirement, so with the regional trail.
And as an avid bicyclist yourself, do you feel like this is the safest plan that we could bring forward that would protect bicyclists and other non-motorized folks like pedestrians getting across?
I do when, oh, sorry, I do when you compare it to the alternatives. We need to slow the traffic down. Sure, an overpass would probably be better, but that's almost double the cost of this, and who's going to fund that? That'd be the ultimate one, but this is a close second on slowing traffic down and making those safety on and off the roundabout if you don't feel comfortable going through the roundabout. And then those 90-degree crossings with the flashing beacons, I think, would be a very safe facility.
Good. Well, I commend you for your design work. I think a roundabout at that intersection is just a terrific idea. And just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable, and Three Rivers was comfortable with the idea that we can get folks back and forth across there that aren't driving a car safely. So thank you.
I'm good with it. I like it.
Okay. All right. Member Brindle, one more follow-on.
I have one more thing that Paul Nelson and I talked about today. In an effort to try and get the bicycles out of, out of the way of the roundabout, if you will, is there any way to elevate the north end enough to get the cyclists under? Or trail users under? How, I mean, it's a, there's a water table issue there. How shallow is it? Is there, is it at all possible?
I think we'd be going well north. You'd be up probably halfway to 62 coming up.
Would it be too close?
I think so, yeah. I don't think, with the floodplain, it's right at, you know, you'd have to have at least a 10-foot box culvert. Now, you have to have cover on that for the roadway. You're down at least 12 to 14 feet below the finish of the road. So then you've got tie-ins. Their easements are going to increase probably with that church property to try to get down far enough and grade out, so it's a whole, yeah, it's just that floodplains driven on the district.
Well, the creek is right there. I mean, it's totally understandable. But I thought I would ask it because Paul and I talked about it today. Thank you.
And this was an informational report, only no action required. Is that correct, Director Milner?
Correct. Just wanted to get your feedback.
Good. Thanks for the, thanks for the update.
Nice to get that money from Three Rivers.
All right. Next matter on the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda is Resolution 2015-41, Accepting Donations and Grants. Is there a motion on that resolution?
So moved. Second.
The motion is second regarding Resolution 2015-41, Accepting Donations on behalf of the City of Adina, which is required by state law. It also requires a four-fifths vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. There is one donation this reporting period that is to the Adina Police Department from AAA Minneapolis in the amount of $2,000 to support the Adina High School Safety Rodeo. So thank you to AAA, right up the road here in St. Louis Park. Next matter is one that, actually, the next few matters. We have Susie Miller with us this evening. Notice Susie here, and our park director, Ann Catry, is here as well. And they will introduce the representative from the Adina Soccer Club, who has helped do so much wonderful work in our town here. We'll meet him momentarily. Ms. Miller, first of all, we got a report early this evening that you're doing a terrific job out there at the Sports Dome and all the other facilities that you're operating. So congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor and council, for having us here tonight. I will introduce Jeff Northrup. He is the Vice President of the Adina Soccer Club, the traveling soccer program. He's here to answer any questions more specifically to the sport, but I just have a quick presentation to give you some more information about what is footsall and why we wanted it at Braymar. So just a little history. Jeff Northrup and the soccer club came to the staff and wanted to know what we were doing with the Braymar's backyard rink when it wasn't going to be used for ice. And he was really interested in bringing the sport of footsall, which we all said, "What?" You know, we didn't really, hadn't heard of it. But we wanted to explore what he was talking about. We didn't have it in the budget for the project, but the club did raise the funds needed to purchase the sport court. And then we worked together to create the agreement that was attached in your packet with the acceptance of the donation. And so tonight, we're here to ask you to accept the donation and approve the request for purchase of the court. So what is footsall? I have a quick video. I think it's the best way to describe it. It's two minutes, but I'm only going to play it for about 45 to 50 seconds. Jennifer is there.
Unmute. There you are, unmuted.
Thank you.
Well, if you play it about five times, it comes to 45 seconds, so I don't...
Oh.
There it is.
Is it?
The rules of footsall are designed to encourage safer and more skillful.
Oh, jeez.
...aid within marked boundary lines, which means players must be more accurate in their passing. The absence of rebound walls or boards also contributes to greater safety for participants. The main feature of the game is the ball, which is a size four, and is designed to have significantly reduced bounce. This tends to result in the ball being on the floor more often and helps to develop skills such as passing, dribbling, and close control. In official championship games, there are usually two referees officiating with a third acting as official timekeeper. However, in junior or school games, one referee is usually sufficient.
That just gives you a glimpse of what it is and how it's quick and it's fast-moving, much quicker than what a soccer, a soccer game is. So what is footsall? We found, you know, it's the small, it's small game activity, and that's what all youth sports are going towards. In hockey, they're now doing cross-ice games and practices, so kids get more puck touches. With footsall, it's more ball touches. It improves their skills. Every time their foot touches the ball, they're improving their skills. So a footsall court makes it happen more often. And we do believe it's, you know, it is, it's growing fast throughout the country, and it's been around the world for many years. In the agreement that's attached, you'll see that the Adina Soccer Club would donate the full cost for the footsall court. Braymar Arena, we would own, operate, and maintain the footsall court. In return for their donation, they would receive 500 hours of free use for the life of the court, or 15 years. In the event that they plan a fee-based activity, for example, a tournament, they would pay us 50% of the market hourly rental rate, not to exceed $25. We're planning on $50, but because we're new, it's new to Minnesota, we don't, we don't really truly know what the market is. We're currently doing a study with what they're doing in Milwaukee to look more thoroughly, but we believe $50 is a fair, a fair rate at this point. And footsall would operate April 1st through October 15th. Now it'd give us time to take the ice out and put the ice back in. Yeah, it didn't go, um, we were planning on keeping ice until mid-May this year. There was a rink in Staples, outside of Staples Center in LA, that was able to operate in 70 degrees without a cover, without a problem, average temp of 70 degrees. We couldn't, anytime it got over 65, we just couldn't maintain our ice. And we kept losing, it was wind, wind was our biggest issue, and that's the difference between us and LA.
So we had an unusually high wind and a warm week, but now you've picked April 1st as your end time, and that seems early to me.
Well, here's our, our problem is, is that the end of, you know, there's not a demand for ice from March 8th until Mar, until April 6th this year, would have been. So we don't need that extra sheet at that point. We got people to buy ice out there this year to commit to it, to, you know, but they had to make a commitment to it, and then we ended up having to take, they had to take their ice away. So we don't have those same customers for next year that are going to want to make that commitment level.
Okay, so that commitment you're saying didn't start until April 15th, so?
No, we had, um, April, April 6th this year was kind of the kickoff to our spring AAA program. And so we had to, we had to sell in order to make it financially. We've just decided that we're not in the spring ice business because we don't really have a demand until the second week in April. And yes, we had, if we had a spring like last year, we would have had a huge success and we probably would have did it for many years to come. And if we had a bad warm winter and, or warm spring in three years, but because of this year...
But we're guaranteeing that for 15 years, we're not going to make ice in April with this contract.
That, it doesn't say it as clearly in the contract, we use the word, um...
Well, your contract actually says it'll commence May 1st instead of April 1st, the term of this, of this year, so that's confusing to me because then it looks like...
When it says April 1st, right here.
Maybe there's some ambiguity in it here because on the first page it does say May 1st.
It does say April 1st, because it was going to be May 1st, that was what our discussions were with them for a long time, and then because we're pretty confident, we're going to have a hard, we will, we will have a very difficult time selling ice. We're not going to try next year, we're going to be done March 15th at the latest because we're not going to be able to get that commitment to justify the, the means, the cost.
Okay.
Mr. Northrup, do you want to walk up here as well? Introduce yourself and you might as well stand up here with Susie.
Should I use the microphone?
Yes.
Um, my name is Jeff Northrup, I'm the Vice President of the Edina Soccer Club, and I will confirm and affirm that Susie's doing a great job over at Braymar. She's helped us tremendously with this, first year with the dome, and we think the dome has been a major success, so.
Would you give us your address too, please?
Yeah, 5221 Wooddale, I live right across the street from the Edina Country Club.
Thank you.
It's a red house.
So with respect to this issue that Member Swenson is raising, where you might have weather variability, and I noticed on page one of the agreement it says, "Weather permitting, the footsall court will be generally open for use from April 1st to October 15th annually." How, how firm does the group feel about that particular date? If we run into a spring like we had last year where they could actually still be playing hockey, assuming it's otherwise financially viable, which it just may not be?
Correct, I'm glad you read that language because that was the language we intended to be in there, that weather permitting, when it's open. I think our intent was to, to, to have a, the sport court down when the ice is out, so if that's May 15th, that's fine, if it's April 15th, if it's March 15th, we're, we're pretty flexible there. We just want to see it be used when there's no ice there.
All right.
So as long as we have a little bit of lead time, we can manage our schedules accordingly.
Roger, do you have any suggestions on language tweaks that would eliminate some of the ambiguity you see in that paragraph three?
Change it to read something like, "Weather permitting, our, the footsall court shall generally be open after the ice is out, after ice out, out of the, from, until October 15th." You can say, take out...
We could say two weeks.
Take out April 1st.
Basically take out April 1st, take out April 1st and put when the ice comes, ice goes out.
Two weeks after the ice goes out.
Two weeks after the ice goes out.
That'd be fair, that's a good, thank you.
And I know you're trying to run things, so not to have, you know, you don't know if we're going to have a, a late spring like we did last year and you maybe could have had ice there and through May. But I just, since we haven't really run the backyard yet for a full season really effectively to even know what's the earliest we'll be putting it in, what's the latest we'll keep it out, depending on, and I understand you, you're trying to run a business where you're renting the ice in advance, so you'd like to know the earliest the ice will be in that you're going to rent it and the, you know, the first time you'll take it out so you're not renting it past. And I, I think probably the changeover in the spring is easier for you to predict because you know that hockey doesn't really, the summer leagues don't start until, what did you say, the second week in April?
Like the second week in April, yeah.
Fall may be a little bit different, so then, so October 15th and, I, I don't know what Oct, I, the average temperature October 15th is, so I just wanted, I, I want to support this, I think it's great. I'm thrilled to have a use for it and I'm thrilled that the soccer association steps up, don't get me wrong. It's just a brand-new facility that we really haven't run very long, and I don't want to enter into a really binding contract for 15 years if, you know, we find that, gee, it'll work better earlier in the fall and the spring is better to stop earlier because of how the schedule for hockey goes. You know, we built it for hockey primarily and I'm thrilled to use it for something else, but I don't want to limit what we originally built it for.
That makes sense.
All right, so I've got a, with Roger's help here, paragraph three could read, "Weather permitting, the footsall court shall be, shall generally be open two weeks after the ice is removed from the rink." You, you've got a defined term in here, you call the backyard the rink. "To honor about October 15th annually, subject to being closed for necessary maintenance." Does that work? Jeff, would that work?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And in terms of the effective date of it, I think that's okay to have that.
That's fine.
That's fine.
I think that's fine, that's just running the term.
And then I think on that second line on paragraph four, it says, "The term of the agreement shall commence on May 1st, 2015, and shall end November 1, 2030, or the useful life of the sport court," I think I should say, "or the end of the useful life of the sport court, or at the end of." So those two changes you're comfortable with? All right, thank you. Other questions for Susie or Jeff Northrup? Kevin Stock?
Mr. Mayor, just in terms of the fee, it looks like, correct me if my math is, is not right on this, you're aiming for like $50 an hour equivalency, you get the 500,000, $55,000 divided by the 500 uses, is that, is that what you were aiming for?
For the, you mean the, the hourly exchange?
Right, because of, right.
We started to look at it that way and then we were also, you know, just looking at their commitment and what we think would be feasible and providing another space for the soccer assoc, soccer club to practice. You know, even though there's been some incredible improvements to the facilities, they always need additional space. So it's not an, it's not a...
I guess I'm just trying to get at what the equivalency was you were trying to...
Because of them being with the, the soccer club, because they're a recognized association, they wouldn't pay for the use of the facility necessarily anyway for practices.
Oh, okay.
As other fields.
And then it talks about an exception for the fee-based events where they'll pay 50% and the parentheses was tournaments, is that, I mean, is there anything else? How do we distinguish between the fee-based and the...
If they're charging a fee from another organization to participate.
Okay. I, I just want to echo, I, I have a son who played a lot of soccer and had the chance to play footsall, it's terrific and it's great fun and it's a great way for the kids to, especially when they're not on the big field, to improve their footwork and, and I, it's a lot of fun to watch too, so I'm, I'm a big supporter, glad to see we're able to use the space.
I do just have one little slide I just wanted to, just to review really quickly is that, you know, that we want it at Braymar because of the diversity of sports. We think it's important to have multiple sports. It's been really fun to watch all of the associations come together at Braymar. We have baseball association meeting, soccer club, soccer association in the arena, and I think it's really fun to have everybody on the one, at one location. I think it also would tie the soccer field and the arena together a little bit more so it makes the soccer field feel a little more part of the arena. And we've seen an increase in our concessions, January through March, of 33%.
Oh, nice.
And I really believe it's because of the backyard rink and Braymar Field. You know, Jeff actually said a few times that he's came in and watched, you know, grabbed a soda and a hot dog and went and watched a hockey game and he never would have before, so we've seen that increase, it's about $26,000 in those three months. But added lighted facility and then just cutting edge, we want to be cutting edge. We believe footsall could be a really fun future for Minnesota. The sport court gave us an amazing price, or gave the soccer club an amazing price because they want to kick it off at Edina, at Braymar Arena. And we think it's, we, we think it's very exciting and we'd love to be a part of it.
Good. Member Stewart.
Yeah, I too want to commend you for using the space that otherwise might be unused, I think that's fantastic and I like this. I, I've also, I've been part of many negotiations and, and I know it's not possible to Monday morning quarterback. In some ways it feels to me like the city is being very generous to the soccer club. 15 years and 500 hours per year is a lot. And my hope is, and I didn't see anything addressing it in here, if there, if there's damage to the boards and that kind of thing during the footsall season, is, is the soccer club going to step up and pay for those repairs and that kind of thing?
I would say that becomes our, you know, responsibility, it's our responsibility to maintain the facility. I don't foresee it with the, you know, with a puck, but I guess that's always a possibility and I think it might be a risk we take to try to bring it forward.
Member Brendel.
All right, thanks. First and foremost, thank you to the Edina Soccer Club for wanting to do this and stepping up to make it possible to do this. I am curious, this is a concrete base when it's not ice, is it not? Okay, so Jeff, if you would please, if you know, would you describe the surface and what is the surface? And if it's on a concrete base, how is it insulated for the kids who fall and roll and whatever they do to not get hurt?
Jennifer, can you go back to that?
Yeah, so the, the...
Would you talk, thanks.
Yeah, the, the floor's plastic, it's a, it's a polymer plastic floor. You'll see a lot of these in people's backyards.
A sport court.
Sport court, right. And we had talked about possibly, you know, not going with a sport court option and just trying it out on the cement floor. I've played footsall on cement and it's, there's a lot of risks and danger to it. And we train a lot on other sport court floors and it's super safe, it's much safer. There's just a lot of give and there's a lot of cushion relative to an asphalt or a concrete floor.
Okay.
So this was our, this is our solution, we want it to be safe and we believe that this is a very safe option for the kids.
All right, and when footsall season is over and it's going to be, and then the surface is going to become ice again, does this roll up and get put away? What happens to it?
Yeah, it's, it's actually one inch, or sorry, one-foot squares that are plastic and they're probably about a half-inch to three-quarters of an inch thick. And they get taken out by the Braymar staff and they'll get stacked.
So it all fits together.
That's a big puzzle. Yep, and then they've got room at the, at the arena on the, I think in the east rink where they can stack these, there'll be nine pallets and they'll be out of the way, and every year they get put in, every year they get taken out.
All right. On average, do you know the life of that surface?
They say it's about 15 years.
So that's what's in here, okay.
It could go longer though because A, we're covered and B, we're only using it half the year, so it could go longer.
Okay.
And we think that with the security and everything that, that's existing, the amenities at Braymar, it should be in relatively good shape.
Thank you. And Member Stewart brought up the damage to the boards. I'm not sure how that's different than the damage to a board, to the boards in a hockey rink at Braymar Arena. I think it, I guess in my opinion it might be dealt with the same way. How are, how are damaged boards, if, if there's a hockey game and the boards get damaged, how do you handle it?
We, we replace the glass or the, you know, it becomes our responsibility.
Okay, so it's not something the team is built for.
No.
But in hockey, they're paying to use the ice, here we're giving them 500 free hours.
They're paying to use this because they donated it. That's, that's a quick quote.
That covers about two years, not 15.
They are paying $55,000.
Yes. 500 hours, $50 an hour.
Well, slice it as you will, it's 15 years of use. So I appreciate it very much, it looks like a lot of fun. I think you'll have the community wanting to do it, so, thanks a lot.
Manager Neil.
I, I don't know if this question is for Susie or for Jeff, but what you're showing here in this graphic is a square field and it's, it's going to be going into an oval shape. So will, how will that work? Will there be spots left on the oval that aren't covered with green or do you intend to, to shape these one, one-foot squares so that they cover all the curved part of the arena as well?
They came and measured the rink and so it's the, the width is basically board-to-board, the length will have excess on both ends.
Are the, are the curves starts, or is it not?
And then it comes, there's edges.
Oh, so the only, the only part of the rink that won't be covered with sport court is the curved ending parts?
Correct.
Okay.
And this comes to approximately 3.5, 3.6 hours a day, every day that they don't have to pay for?
Yes, it's, um, we were looking at it, if it, when it was a 20-week season, which was like end of May until end of September, it was about 20 hours a week was 400 hours, and so now we're extending, you know, the season, and it does have that flexible start date, but...
And what happens since the average temperature in October, the average highs 58 degrees, what happens if you decide that you want to handle your ice time, your startup of ice time differently? And we have a 15-year agreement?
Historically, our demand for ice is from after MEA through, through that, through the state high school tournament, and then, you know, in Edina, we do get that extra week because we usually have so many people going to the youth tournament.
Okay.
But that's just the historical season that's our busiest, that we need that fourth sheet of ice.
Well, you know, we had such discussions over ice time with trying to balance figure skating and hockey before.
Right, right.
And we've tried to find that, and then we added this additional ice which we were really happy about. So I, I don't, I'm not trying to be overly protective, I just...
Right, the EHA season is kind of after MEAs when it really kicks off.
But I can hear you've thought about the end part too, and I appreciate that.
We've discovered that, you know, because we've become so busy in the summer, we used to shut down our rink in the summer and do maintenance, you know, and kind of rotate, we can't anymore. So we shut down, like in March, we shut down our south rink and took out the ice and repainted it and did the maintenance. So March and September have become our maintenance months. And that's why we have the, could be closed or, you know, depending on maintenance, because if we want to do maintenance on another sheet, then we would start up the outdoor rink earlier if it's needed.
Sure, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, and paragraph five deals with, it's headlined association use, but it's really more of a scheduling provision. You're, you're content with the language in that particular paragraph which says, they've got the right of first refusal and on the hours they want to use the facility, they let you know each year by February 15th what the days and hours are that they want, and then you reserve the right to schedule primetime hours for programs and events?
Right, that we would like to run, if we want to run tournaments and programs and, for leasing to other groups as well.
Okay. You're satisfied with that language for...
Yes, yeah.
Protecting city interests?
Yes, because we have the ability to run the programs at all times, yeah.
Okay. And I don't see anything in here that would potentially adversely affect us, but if you decide you want to have an event or a program in charge for it, we're not sharing revenue with EHS?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Or, yes.
Or, yeah, Edina Soccer Club, excuse me. All right, this is, any other questions for Susie or for... Thank you.
Or yes?
Yeah, Edina Soccer Club, excuse me. All right. This is, any other questions for Susie or for Jeff?
Nope.
All right, great. We had a couple revisions on the agreement. Does someone want to move the resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-two with those changes to the agreement, which would be accepting a donation approving the agreement of the Edina Soccer Club? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second on resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-two, which accepts the donation and approves the agreement with the Edina Soccer Club as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And as Member Brendel said, Jeff North, thanks to the club. This is a wonderful idea, and thanks for approaching the city on it. Really appreciate it.
Please do.
All right. Another related matter is request for purchase. We need to take care of that matter as well, which is embodied in the next resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, a second, to approve the purchase from C and C Court Sync of the Futsal Court. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And the last matter of business on the main part of the agenda this evening is proposed resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-three sponsoring an application for the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Grant for the sixty-six West Apartment Project. Mr. Nundorf, our Economic Development Manager, has this matter.
Your Honor, normally this item would be one that we would include on a consent agenda, but it didn't meet our packet agenda, and there's a deadline that occurs prior to your next council meeting. Because council has dealt with, has been directly involved in the sixty-six West project, we wanted to bring this to you tonight and give you a chance to, the opportunity to approve it if you deem you want to.
Thank you. Manager Neil? Mr. Nundorf?
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Thanks again for adding this to the agenda, and apologies for the last-minute addition earlier today. This resolution proposes that the city serve as sponsor and serve as the applicant when Beacon Housing applies to the Met Council Livable Communities Act for grant assistance. The Beacon or the sixty-six West project has been approved for several months. We've been meeting with the developer to look at their financing plans and their timeline. One of the biggest challenges in delivering affordably-priced housing is cobbling together funding from a number of different revenue sources. So this is the first of several different sources that they're applying to. The city took a similar action last year for the same project, and this request is simply a re-up for two thousand fifteen. The reason that we're adding it to the agenda today is that new in two thousand fifteen, Met Council requires a pre-application be submitted by May first. Typically, the applications are required in July, but this year they've moved it up to May first, so that's why we're here this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, and also Ann Mavady with Beacon Housing is here tonight as well.
Member Swenson?
Are you saying that we did one of these a year ago, and this, we're just redoing it? Because my memory is failing me, and I don't remember passing a resolution before.
Yes, in two thousand fourteen, it was not a resolution. In two thousand fourteen, the Met Council requirement was to sign something that was called a letter of receptivity to grant funding. So that was the letter that we signed in two thousand fourteen. But this year, they're requesting the city serve as, traditionally, serve as the applicant and pass a formal resolution to indicate that they will sponsor and serve as the applicant. So it's a Met Council change.
So what in all does that entail? I know you've just tried to explain it, but I missed exactly what sponsoring them entails to us and what it obligates us to.
Sure, great question. So what it obligates us to is to be the conduit for the grant. In the event that the application is successful, the way that the Met Council fundings are set up, they do not allow developers to apply directly for the grant funding. They require developers to work with a local municipality, and then the municipality actually is the one that submits the grant application. So we'll work with the applicant to put the grant request together. We'll, the developer will be responsible to make sure that the wording and the grant request is a hundred percent accurate and reflects the nature of the project, but the city must be the one that actually hands it into the Met Council.
And then are you saying if it's approved, that they don't release funds directly to the, they release the funds to us?
That's correct, yeah. And this is traditionally how Met Council grants work, also deeds, grants from deed. So the city would enter into an agreement with the Met Council in this case. We would then also enter into a sub-recipient agreement that basically says that the city would be awarded the money. We will then pass it to the developer, and the developer is required to satisfy all terms and conditions of that grant award. So this is traditionally how it works in the industry, and the city has done this, most recently for Pentagon Park, when they received the grants.
Okay, Scott?
Your Honor and Councilmember Swenson, the purpose of this, of course, is that the Met Council doesn't want to wade into local tribal fights in the cities where it works. And so they want to make sure that if they are going to commit their scarce resources to projects, that those projects are going to be received positively, and they're not going to be seen as instituting or furthering some project in a community that's not wanted by the elected officials of that community. So it's really meant to be a deference to you and your roles as elected municipal leaders.
And does that then mean that we have no legal liability in our receipt and the giving of the money, et cetera?
I'm not understanding that.
Would you explain that one again?
Yeah, maybe I didn't explain, well, what I'm trying, where's the, what's the risk to us of doing it? I see what the risk of not doing it is. My question is, what's the risk of doing it in a legal sense? Is there any risk of doing it?
I don't think it's ever possible to say none, but close to none.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's usually what we ask you on these things. What would be our obligations?
But you'll also see the agreement and the sub-grant agreements, and if you don't like those agreements, you don't have to sign them.
Yeah, the risk really may be more of political risk, in the sense that if this were a project that you didn't like, this would be a way to express your dislike for it.
Right, that's what I said. I said, I can see that side of it. It was the other side that I was more concerned about with, and what we usually ask you. When we do conduit bonds and things like that, we always ask you, so what's our downside on it? So I know what the upside is, actually.
It's about the same as on a conduit bond.
Okay, perfect.
All right, Roger, let me ask you a question. On the second to the last paragraph, it says, "Be it further resolved that the city, by its agreeing to act as legal sponsor for the grant application for the project, has no obligation to the Metropolitan Council or to Beacon to approve any land use permitting or any other current or future requests relating to any, related to any current or future proposed development of thirty-three thirty West Sixty-sixth Street by Beacon." I'm wondering about adding in a little bit of language there that would indicate that this also wouldn't obligate us to provide any financing for the project? If that's possible.
Sure, you can...
All right. So what this could read like to me would be, if you get to those last two lines, where it says, "To approve any land use permitting or approving any other current or future requests, including any financing for the project, related to any current or future proposed development of thirty-three thirty West Sixty-sixth Street by Beacon." I don't know if that's important to other members of the council. Maybe it's not, based on what Roger said, but it does seem to be a bit of a belt-and-suspenders sort of approach. Anyone have a comment on that?
It's extra protection. I don't think it hurts to have it.
Member Stewart, would you move the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Anything else, Mr. Nundorf?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Mavady?
Thank you.
Do you have a legal sponsor?
Created.
All right, correspondence and petitions. We had some additional material on our, in front of us this evening on the dais. Anything else?
Nothing beyond that.
All right. And then aviation noise update. Member Swenson or Manager Neil?
Well, I went to a meeting that I could have used Manager Neil at, which was the NOC meeting of just the representatives of individual suburbs and cities, not the FedEx guy and the Delta Airlines guy, because the NOC has twelve members, and six of them are, represent either cities or the one representative at large, which we are a part of the at-large. The beginning part of the meeting was really great, because we went around the room, and everyone talked about current issues or non-issues within their cities, and that was certainly helpful to me as the kind of backup at-large person. The one interesting thing that happened was I was asked about, we were asked as a group to add to the agenda transparency, which I didn't know where it was coming from. And the person who will remain nameless from another community was very upset because he thought that our city had started the legislative move last year to disband the NOC. And I corrected him and let him know that, you know, Ron Earhart in charge of transportation had done that in, as a response to his residents calling him. I did, however, remind him that part of that legislation was to allow temporary monitoring, which they had already turned us down on. So it was a very interesting conversation with them. I don't know how else to address it, and then it kind of, and Minneapolis was at the tail end of another discussion, not too dissimilar from that. So it's a very interesting group. I would say they've been doing it a long time. We have a very tenuous position in it, I would say.
Manager Neil?
I don't have any update.
Any aviation update from Barcelona or other places that you flew in or out of?
Delta Airlines was very kind to me yesterday, and I'm very appreciative of their flexibility. Thank you.
All right. Council updates, comments. Member Stockton?
I just wanted to raise one item that transpired in the last couple of weeks. This past Friday, there was a reception that, had I been in town, I would have attended for Susan Russell Freeman, who is the executive director of Veep at a local food shelf, and has been the executive director for thirty-nine years and is retiring. And in my work with the local, one of the local Rotary Clubs, I've gotten to know her. She is a force of nature. She is someone who has brought that organization from virtually nowhere to be a real player in providing a safety net in Edina, Richfield, Bloomington, South Minneapolis. And she just is somebody who deserves recognition for having provided incredible service to our community. And I just wanted to take this moment, because I wasn't able to be there, to recognize her and thank her on behalf of those of us in Edina who have benefited from the service that she has worked so hard to provide.
Neil, thank you very much. Member Swenson?
Well, I happen to know that the Tin Fish has opened at Braymar, because my family without me went to eat there between hockey practice, that was late at dinner, or early dinner and late dinner, because the outdoor ice sheet didn't last as long as they thought it was going to. But the report is that it was excellent. And so I want everyone in the community to kind of put it on your list of places to go for all you foodies, and check out the new Tin Fish at Braymar Golf.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
Thank you. I'll follow on the Tin Fish comment and say that those of us who live in the Braymar area where things, places to go eat and socialize aren't real walkable, because they're so far away, although Ralph and I have been known to walk to Seventieth and Cahill to have dinner and fool around. And, anyway, just have some fun. But anyway, this is very...
Glad you clarified that.
Yes, yes. But this is very walkable, and so I'm very excited about it. And Athena and Chef Priest couldn't, I mean, we couldn't be in better hands with someone to, to kind of take Braymar Golf Course and bring it forward for us and with us. A couple things, also following on Susan Russell Freeman's retirement. She has done just an enormous, an enormous service to residents of Edina, Richfield, South Minneapolis, and Bloomington. It is her vision that built Veep to become the, what is now the largest food shelf in the state of Minnesota. And Edina, I haven't heard the statistics in the last probably nine months or so, but it, Edina accounts for the largest increase in clients at Veep. So it is an important service and resource for people in Edina. Couple things, again, I have some notes. We talked about street lighting in Speak Up Edina Tonight, and it brought up, to me, there was one, maybe a comment or two in there that talked about house numbers. And it made me, it brought up, there are, in some places, homes without numbers on the front, and I would think that that would be very difficult for emergency vehicles to find a destination if it doesn't have numbers on the front. So both from that, as well as when you have guests, just make sure that your home is identified easily, and so that your guests and emergency vehicles can find you. Also, if you have landscaping that is hiding your house numbers, trim the landscaping. House numbers really are important. And find a place where they're prominent, make sure they're visible. Speaking of landscaping, if you have a street sign on your corner, and you live on the corner, and you have a tree that is kind of hiding the street sign, please trim it so that street sign is visible. That is also important to emergency vehicles and guests. Let's see here. I was at the high school recently, and First Robotics, the team was practicing, and they were kind of in the lobby by E-PAC, and it was the coolest thing. I just stood there in awe. And the robot is picking up rectangular storage bins, these plastic storage bins, and stacking them, and bringing them over and stacking them. So it has to, it has to have it in an orientation, and it has to meet the bin that it's going to stack into and get it in there. And it'll pick up one, it'll pick up a couple of them, and then bring them over there, and then it'll unstack them. And it was, I, it was just really cool. I did read in our correspondence that the Edina High School First Robotics Team received the Champions Award, which is the highest award given by First Robotics. And that is just a huge congratulations to this team for what they are accomplishing through their teamwork, but it's also a recognition of the professionalism of this team as they go out and include the broader community in their project. The names on the outside of this machine, the labels, Honeywell, Medtronic, I can't even remember. I'm not even going to try to name what's on there. But it's really cool to see what they're doing and see the connections they're making. And our world is in good hands with these, with these young people. There is a video, there is a YouTube video of the award, so if you're so inclined, go out and look for it. Let's see. Building safety. Oh, we talked a little bit about buildings tonight. Building safety... Oh, we talked a little bit about buildings tonight, building safety. And being someone who has worked in the disaster recovery area, I would encourage everyone to have a disaster plan. We have one in our house. We know where we're all going to meet each other if we have to get out fast. And so, I would encourage everyone to have a disaster plan. Get your kids thinking about it, get them knowing where they're going to meet, so there's no one left in a house if they have to get out for some reason. I attended an Act on Alzheimer's meeting yesterday. The Act on Alzheimer's Group is a group that, that has representatives from a wide range of organizations. And this is a group that is working to make Edina a dementia-ready and a dementia-friendly community. And the city of St. Paul is ahead of us on this. They are actively training people. They've trained over 1,500 people so far. And basically, what the training is, is just telling people and sharing with people ways to communicate. If you, if you, if you suspect that you're communicating with someone who, who has dementia, who is looking for something, for example, their keys, it's as simple as, rather than saying, "Here they are," you say, "Here are your keys." And, and so, it's that, it's that kind of sensitivity and understanding so that, so that we can all help each other. There's a large segment of our population who currently have dementia or will have dementia. And so, it's something that we are all going to live with, either by supporting someone or experiencing it ourselves. So, it's going to be important. So, expect to see training offered in Edina. Might be at your church, it might be at your, your bridge club, your book club, your place of work, any of those places. Let's see here. Two more things. Sorry, I'm long-winded. So, in the consent agenda, we had an item where the Minneapolis Institute of Arts is going to decorate the water tower at Southdale. And it goes up in May and it comes down in September. And it's in celebration of the Minneapolis Institute of Arts 100th anniversary. If we really like the artwork, can we leave it up till we paint the water tower? Or does it have to come down in September?
It's my understanding that it does need to come down, because it, it needs to be removed in a controlled fashion, rather than blowing off in an uncontrolled, as in winter.
Like in winter. Okay. All right. Very good. And the last thing is Weber Woods. Do we have an update on Weber Woods?
I will give you an update on Weber Woods. Staff from both cities met with staff from the city of Minneapolis last week, I believe. And we had a chance to kind of go through a couple different scenarios of what they were interested in seeing before we agreed on a price. And as we talked about this, I think the last time we had a meeting, and St. Louis Park City Council's also had a discussion. There is an interest from the city of Minneapolis, or there is, there's been an expression of, of an interest in what we plan to do with the property. And if we plan to do something with the property that has benefits for the residents of Minneapolis, they would consider a lower price than the price they had previously quoted to us. So, we had planned to do something that would be beneficial to them anyway. So, we have proposed to create, they asked us to create a graphical expression of what that would look like and bring that back to them, and we are working on that right now.
Great.
Members Stewart?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want to commend the Energy and Environment Commission. They had a meeting on April the 8th, on a Wednesday. I actually came late, but had a great panel, which included Paul Douglas, talking about a number of environmental issues, and they got high school kids involved, and it was a very cool event. So, commendations to our Edina Environment and Energy Commission for that. I know also, last Tuesday, there was an open house for the Vision Edina process. And tonight, at our work session, we heard a little bit more about Vision Edina and some of the output that is in draft form now from that. So, very excited about that. It's great to have that kind of input as we start to do some longer-term planning for the city. And it's very useful for us as elected representatives to know sort of the mindset for the community. So, that's a wonderful thing, and I think a great foundation from which to build, so. Also, last night, I know several of us attended a, a session to commend and thank our members of our boards and commissions. We have some phenomenal citizen volunteers who do a lot of work on our commissions and boards, and I just want to, again, say thank you to all those people for all the hard work they do all year round. They are truly unsung heroes here in the city, and just really want to tip our hat and thank them for the hard work that they do, day in and day out. Upcoming events. Tomorrow, Wednesday, there is a meeting at the Senior Center on the Grand View Project. There's an open house. I don't have the time on that, Scott. Is it 7:00 o'clock? Oh, 5:30. 5:30 at the Senior Center. So, and then, Member Brindle, you may know more about this than I do. This, on Sunday, April 26th, at the Edina Community Center, something called Mini Haha Music. Are you familiar with that offering?
I have not been to their concert. I understand they're a wonderful, very talented group. I did talk with Michael Frye, and he said they're just fabulous.
Yeah. And then, for those who like to see the high school kids perform, which I do, Current Jam, an annual event that's a tradition in Edina for a long, long time now. This year, it's earlier than normal, so be warned, because the school year has been moved up this year. So, this year, it's April 29th to May 2nd, and those tickets do sell out. So, if you're interested in Current Jam at the high school, I encourage you to get your tickets. So, thanks.
I am so glad you told me that, because that's one of my favorite events every year. Love to go and watch that talent show, really, is what it is. The kids are great. So, thanks for that information. Several of us were able to attend the event that Member Stewart mentioned, the Environmental Forum, at the FIC on the 8th of April. Paul Douglas did a terrific job talking about our changing climate. And the two high school students that are on our Energy and Environment Commission were just, handled themselves beautifully as, as co-hosts or part of the, part of the meeting. It was very, very impressive. And on the 10th of April, I attended a, an event called, "On Behalf of Corner House," which is a Minneapolis-based nonprofit that works with abused children and adolescents. That was over at Edina Country Club. And there were quite a few folks there that we would have known from our community. It was an excellent program. And then, I was able to attend the Susan Freeman event on behalf of the city on last Friday night. It was a very nice turnout. She did a beautiful job, as she always does, in making some remarks and talking about her time spent there. I suspect we'll see her, after a little hiatus, doing more nonprofit work. And in fact, our former mayor, Denny Metzold, and some of our other former residents have formed an umbrella organization, sort of a, I'll call it a foundation that assists foundations. And I wouldn't be surprised to see Susan end up, ending up helping them a little bit. So, last Sunday, we had the 2015 Days of Remembrance here at City Hall. It's the fifth year in a row that we've acknowledged and recognized the National Days of Remembrance. There were about 130 people here. We, it was so impressive. Jan Seidman, who was, who was the head of the Human Rights and Relations Commission, did a wonderful job in preparing it, as did others that work on the, on the Human Rights and Relations Commission. The topics were the Armenian genocide, the presentation by Dr. Ellen Kennedy from our community, and then also, they had a Holocaust survivor who was just, she's 91 years old, hard, she's got some slight impediments, but she just did a wonderful job. We did Walk with the Mayor last Saturday, over at Roslyn Park. And back on the 15th of May, we had a TAB meeting, and we're working on this regional solicitation. Embedded in the, in the non-motorized portion of that regional solicitation is our project, the Niemough Creek Project. And no decisions have yet been made by the TAB as to how they're going to spend the monies or allocate the monies that are available, but keep your fingers crossed that we're really in the mix there. And we should have some good direction from the TAC, that's the Technical Advisory Committee, Funding and Programming, for the TAB for the May meeting. And I think we'll have a decision by June on what kinds of projects will be funded in different modal categories. So, keep your fingers crossed for our project on that, on that particular endeavor. And let's see, the robotics team, they're in the Nationals this month in, in St. Louis, and I've asked them to think about coming to see the city council here when they get back from the Nationals, to tell their story of a successful winter, and maybe we'll get them to bring that material handling equipment along, that robotic material handling equipment, and give a presentation out in the lobby. And amongst the many things you, you maybe noted on the machine itself was Bob Stewart's signature. You said a lot of signatures were on there, but Bob's was on there as well. As it got packaged up that day for the contest.
And Mayor Haveland.
There's a, there's a drop dead date where they have to package it up and not touch it again until the competition over at Williams Arena, in this case. Now, future events. Next Wednesday, the 29th, is the Volunteer Recognition Dinner, and that is going to be at the Braemar Clubhouse. So, we'll get to test out Tin Fish's ability to handle a big crowd, as opposed to individual patrons. So, this will be, this will be enjoyable. Hope you all can attend. The remodeling out at the clubhouse has just came out beautifully, I think. The banquet room especially is really quite impressive. And, and thanks, Member Stewart, for recognizing the board and commission folks, the outgoing and the incoming. They really are our partners in building a better community, and we really appreciated the work that they did over all those years. Member Stockton, you, you were, you were recognized as a, the party member of the Planning Commission. So, thank you for all your great years of service on the Planning Commission as well.
You're welcome.
Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One is, is a scheduling announcement as well. The task force that's been working on the France Avenue-Southdale planning process has a check-in meeting. That'll be an open-house style meeting where they're going to show sort of an update of where things are going with their, with their work on Saturday. Starts at 10:00, it's over by noon. It'll be at the Senior Center. And so, it's a drop, you can drop in and see and comment on it at any time. Just to make a happy announcement here as well, the Edina City Management Fellow, Lyndi Crawford, has successfully got a job, and she's going to be the new city administrator for the city of Tonka Bay, Minnesota. And that'll happen sometime in, sometime in May. We're still negotiating her severance out of here, so we'll take severance, whatever it's called. We have selected a, a new fellow, and his name is Devon Massipust, and Devon will be joining us in June, the 1st, 1st of June.
Now, Bob would like to know, is that of the Edina Massipust family? Because he knows everyone, and I knew he was going to ask that. I could see him waiting.
Well, I'd just ask him as well.
I don't know. I don't know. I will.
With a name like Massipust, it has to.
It has to be. I'll, I'll find out. Well, well, I'll find out. And the last thing for me is just a reminder to, to all of us and all of our loyal viewers that our first meeting in May is not May 5th because of the referendum, the school referendum. It is Wednesday, May 6th. So, we need to remind, I need to remind all the staff of that, so that we make sure that we've got dates right on things and, and that things are moving in the right direction. But it'll be Wednesday, May 6th is our first.
I just want to point out, the Bruce Avenue All-Stars will be without a pitcher that night because of this.
Do we have a Southwest Cable meeting tomorrow at 4:00?
We do indeed have a Southwest Cable Commission meeting tomorrow at Menetaka City Hall.
Okay.
At 4:00 PM.
Okay.
We might be selecting a new chair tomorrow. That's part of the agenda, so you know.
And when you announce the Saturday event at the Senior Center from 10:00 to noon, if folks are interested, they could come out early and join those of us that are part of the Edina Rotary for Highway Cleanup. It's this Saturday morning between, right outside of City Hall here at 50th, all the way to the Crosstown. And probably be about an hour's worth of work for everybody if we get enough folks to show up, and it's a good way to get that highway cleaned up twice a year.
That's all I have for you?
All right. That's all I have. Anything else?
We stand adjourned.